So I called the work session to order.
All right, am I up?
You're up.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that? You should also have a paper copy there in front of you, Lee said. So.
Whoops, sorry, Taylor. So in front of you, you should have the sheets that Taylor's sharing on the screen. The first one you should find would be with the fund balance title. All right.
So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Taylor Johnson, Bowman and Miller, Marsh Town, and this is the second year we've we've done your audit, so it's good to be back. How I go through things, rather than taking you through all ninety pages of the audit report, I try and condense it down into two sections. The first section is the the numbers part, and I summarize it on a three-page spreadsheet that you have in front of you there. And then the second section is the actual comments at the end of the report. And I'll point out page numbers along with that when we get to that point. I just want to start and say, you know, overall, I think the city is in good financial position as I'll go through here in a minute. And a lot of the comments, almost all of them that we're gonna go through are repeats from last year, but if you remember, when I shared my, it'd be the FY twenty audit report, this is FY twenty-one audit report, and I shared that in August of twenty twenty-one, I I started off by saying, hey, these are probably gonna be a repeat next year because the state was so far behind on finishing your FY nineteen audit, it pushed our FY twenty audit back. Hopefully now we're finally finally on schedule. But a lot of them are repeated because we didn't finish the audit report till for FY twenty until FY twenty-one was done, and so you didn't have a chance to correct them. So here in this next, and I and I talked at the exit conference. Here in these next few months, you got a chance to really work towards correcting some of these things and getting them cleaned up for the FY twenty-two audit report. So that being said, I'll go through the numbers here. So the first page there is fund balance for each fund. The general fund had had good steady increases again this year, and as you can see, we got a four-year comparison, so the last two years are what we did, and then the previous two years were the numbers the state had. Coming down to the road use fund, you had an increase in fund balance there, and that has to do with the increase in road use tax funding, which all the cities were up this last year. And then the loss fund was also up, you had an increase in local option sales tax money that you guys have a lot of economic development going on and growth coming out of the pandemic, too, I think. So that had a good increase in the local option sales tax fund. Debt service decreased, and this was because of a prior year corrected transfer that was done with the GO bonds from the city hall remodel that were were received into the debt service fund, but then subsequently transferred out to the capital projects fund. Capital projects fund, on the flip side of that, increased because of that corrective transfer that was done, as well as a transfer for local option sales tax money. Water continued to go up, and we had an increase rates to the corrective rates they're supposed to be at. I'll touch on in a minute. The sewer also increased, you had a decrease in expenses, which I'll touch on down below here when I get to the expense side. Going down, the library trust fund balance was was down, purchased furniture, new HVAC system, a lot bigger expenses. Same thing with the park and recreation. That fund balance is down for all the park improvements you guys have been doing. But overall, this is what I wanted to point out, your total fund balance, which is essentially your cash balance June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, so the audit we're looking at is July one of twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Your fund balance at the end of June is almost fourteen point two million. For for a city your guys' size, that that's a good, healthy fund balance, in my opinion. So I would say overall, that's that's really good to see. Going on down here to the next page. We got the revenue side of things here. So the general fund revenue is down from the prior year, and if you remember last year, you guys got the bequest from the IRE estate, which obviously you didn't have FY twenty-one, causing the revenues to go down. The road use tax funds, I touched on already, an increase in funds from the state causing the revenues to go up. Local option sales tax revenues are up, like I said, economic growth coming out of the pandemic in the in the prior year caused caused that increase. Debt service, so we're down quite a bit in revenue debt service. The main reason for that is in FY twenty, you had the bond issuance for the city hall renovation, which obviously you didn't have in FY twenty-one. So that that caused the revenues to go down. On the other side of that, the water revenue went from eight hundred nineteen thousand to almost three point one million revenue. And that was mainly because in FY twenty-one, you did water bond refunding that you received money in for that. Jumping down to employee benefits, the revenue is up because of the increase in the employee benefits, levy and your property tax values continue to go up. Library trust, again, that had to do with the IRE bequest in the prior year, you went from three hundred eleven thousand of revenue down to almost four thousand from mainly due to that very large bequest in the prior year. Parks and Recs, same thing, IRE bequest, and then playground donations in the prior year didn't have this year on. But overall, your your revenues stayed fairly constant, so you went from fourteen point four, six, seven to fourteen point five, six, nine, so fairly constant revenues. But again, for for a city your size, that is pretty pretty good, I would say. Going down to the expense side of things here, so the one thing to remember about expenses is we we budget for expenses by function and not by fun. So the different functions are public safety, public works, culture and rec, community and economic development, general government, debt service, capital projects, and then the business-type activities, which is the water, sewer, electric, and solid waste. That's why I have it broken out like this. So public safety, you had a decrease from the prior year, and in the prior year, you had fire gear and grain bin equipment that I believe you had bought, that we didn't have that expense in FY twenty-one. Public works, there were some reclassifications of employees with how their pay was getting allocated from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. So that caused the public work expenses to go down. Culture and recreation, again, we had the library and park. You had the furniture, the HVAC for the library, and then all the park improvements. Those expenses caused caused the increase in the current year. Community and economic development, so these TIF agreements that you've started doing are starting to come online, go on the tax rolls. So you had more rebates, and you started that grant, TIF grant program, so you're paying that money out as well, causing the increase in expenses. So you can see kind of how in eighteen there wasn't much, and then as these TIF agreements have started to come on the property tax rolls, we've had increases in those community and economic development expenses. Debt service, substantial decrease in expenses in the prior year. Again, we had the bond refunding in the prior year, FY twenty, that we didn't have this year. And on the flip side of that, in the water, you had the water refunding expense that we you didn't have in the prior year, causing it to be almost three million in expenditure. Sewer, there was equipment purchases in the prior year that you didn't have in the current year. And then for the solid waste, there was the truck purchase, and then there was an increase in cost to the city of musketeen for disposal costs. Lee, did you ever find any more about out about that?
I've not found anything more about that yet, Taylor. I'll follow up with you on it, where my discussions at.
And then health insurance, starting in January, you guys had a decrease in health insurance premiums, so it went out of there went went down. Overall, your total expenses were about thirteen point seven million. But here here's what you like to see. So in over the last four years, your change in fund balance, which is essentially your increase in cash, has been positive four years in a row. That's good. We're having good steady growth in the cash balances. Like I said, financially, I think you guys are in great position for the amount of cash you have. And I think you're in good position going forward. So any questions with the numbers before I get to the comments?
I have a quick question, Taylor. When you were saying like you separated by function, not by fund, is that typical for cities, small cities?
Yep, it it's required by the Code of Iowa because that's how you do your budget. Yep.
Yeah.
All right, I'll move on to the comments here. So open up the page forty-nine of the audit report, and you can follow along here and on the screen. All right. So the first comment, and and I tell every city audit that I do, this is common in almost every small town, given the size of the city and the number of employees you guys can have. Segregation of duties is almost always in there because in small-town Iowa, you have one or two people wearing five or six different hats. So this has gotten better in in the last few years, and I I think it will continue to get better because since June third of twenty twenty-one, you've added two people to the office. I believe Brittany and and David have come on since then. So I I you guys are trending the right way with this. So I I use this as my yearly reminder, whether it's for the city, the friends of the library, or the fire department, that people who are, you know, on the council governance in charge, I the yearly reminder, just to have good oversight, look at the reports you're getting at, you're getting, and ask questions, because that's your your job. And I do believe Lee is is working towards reallocating duties now that there's two extra people. There's been, you know, a lot of short staffed in city hall last couple of years, but I do believe you guys are trending the right way on this. Going on to page fifty. Comment E there for the banker reconciliation, so. So part of what we look at is is the bank rec throughout the year. And so the bank statements are not getting reconciled back to the financial reports in the city system. The bank recs are getting done, and the activity on the bank statement is getting put into the system. The the problem is, then, what the system says is not getting reconciled back to that bank reconciliation. And there's an issue with the credit card payments for utilities that are getting cut off at weird times. It's really, really hard to reconcile all of those. So as a result, there's usually an adjusting entry every month to plug the activity on the bank statements to put it into the city system, rather than poaching posting each transactions. And along those lines, the monthly bank recs are not being reviewed and approved by an independent first person, which results in these issues not being resolved in a timely manner. So the response was that the city will create a reconciliation policy for additional staff oversight, signature review. And I believe, Lee, you're gonna start having quarterly meetings with the financial committee for review of all of these. Is that correct?
That's correct, Taylor.
Okay, so I again, I I believe steps are being taken to to correct this. And and I've I've looked at those credit card reports, and and they are a bear to get through, and but I I think Lee and Sheri are working through that, trying to find a system to rectify that. Moving on to comment C on page fifty-one. So financial reporting. So during the audit, we we know two things. One, the payment from the rural ambulance board for ambulance equipment reserve was received into the general fund and the fire reserve fund instead of the ambulatory reserve fund. However, entries were made to correct this after the fact. And then also, two former employees were listed on the June health insurance bill, even though they weren't eligible for health insurance because the employees weren't full-time employees at at June first, and they weren't part of Cobra either. However, the city ended up paying this bill for the whole amount. But Lee, do you want to touch on on either one of those? I know on the health insurance, you were working on getting credits back from Walmart?
What we did with our audit, then we reached out to our administrator for and followed back up with them because we had communicated the termination. The termination date was not completed through our administration. And I've been working with them, and they're issuing credits back, which we've already received some credit back from those. And the communication that, and this is the first time I ran into some trouble with our administrative staff, but they had stated that they were working from home and short-staffed. And likewise, from my side of it, originally, when we were going through payroll, I have a checks and balance and an audit, and I, due to timing, I was not able to implement that. And so and now I put that back into the process. And so with that, that will also help me catch those things in a more timely basis as well. And then part of that process is, then, the deputy city clerk, clerk Sheri, once I've completed all of the payroll transactions, then it goes to her, and then she'll reconcile and audit to make sure that the payroll and the deductions and everything is matching up with the statements. So that's the process that we thought, you know, in place to, and hopefully it continues to go the right direction, so. Meaning that hopefully Sheri stays with me and I don't lose her to another great employer, so. She was teasing me to do, Taylor, sorry.
Any other questions on that, on comment C there, before I keep going? All right, the next comment goes from the bottom of fifty-one to the top of fifty-two. And this is a continuation from last year, as well as we performed and agreed upon procedures issued to report last fall on on this issue. But the last part of this issue pulled over into July of twenty twenty-one, so that's why it's popping up again, this audit. So during the audit, there was underbilling of sewer rates to West Liberty Foods. And West Liberty Foods is in a water customer because they have their own water. So there was an issue with the water rates. But the rates used for the billing of sewer to West Liberty Foods for July of twenty twenty was the rates that were supposed to be effective from July one of twenty nineteen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty based on the ordinance. Because of that, there was underbilling of ten thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars to West Liberty Food. I believe there you've since, Lee, worked on procedures to ensure proper utility rates are put in and are moving forward from this.
Taylor, what we so far, again, is creating that policy. When we have rates, adopt new rates, then we have a system in place where the rates are implemented, then they're audited. And we've also worked with our software company to have this billing generated through the software versus an Excel spreadsheet. And so again, we're continuing to improve on, you know, having the the processes in place and the audit steps internally to not have this happen again. Okay.
All right, moving on to the next comment. Comment E, payroll records management. So part of what we did is we tested payroll, and during that, we noted that three monthly IPRs reports were not filed timely, which caused late fees of ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, and also seven, so you make monthly deposits to IPRs. Seven of them were not timely remitted, and the city ended up paying interest of a hundred forty dollars on these. So the the response from the city was that they're working on procedures to ensure that the IPRs reports and deposits are are remitted timely, and talking to the exit conference, I believe, that kind of rolled all in with the health insurance processes we already touched on and having a checklist to go down each month to make sure all this gets done. That correctly?
Right, Taylor. And again, with increasing staffing and having, again, a new city manager, that's going to allow us, Walmart, that's going to allow, you know, for myself and for deputy city clerk to be able to have the time to, you know, process payroll and to audit these items. Again, when we were understaffed, it was difficult to work, to stay on top of a few things, so. So taking accountability for that and making sure that we have it correct going forward.
All right, moving on then to comment F there on page fifty-three, disaster recovery plan. The the city doesn't have a written disaster recovery plan, so our recommendation was that you should get one. And this this has really been a point of emphasis for the last few years, at least for me and and the odds we do, considering we lived through a tornado in Marsh Town, and then a couple of years later, Dr. Joe, the importance of having this plan in place and having a process to be able to get functioning again soon. And one of the biggest things you wouldn't think of is keeping a copy of that disaster recovery plan off-site. You wouldn't think about it, but that's probably pretty key, because if, say, city hall burns up and a disaster recovery plan is in city hall, that doesn't work out the greatest. So something that I think the city needs to work towards, and I believe they are working on implementing that. Moving moving on to page fifty-four, disbursements. So of the thirty-four transactions we've looked at, there were four of them that were, did not have supporting documents maintained. And then one of the thirty-four transactions paid sales tax on. Sales tax has been another thing over the past few years we've been looking at. It it's really tough in some places, but keep in mind that, there with a few exceptions, there the city shouldn't be paying sales tax on on items as a general rule. Again, sometimes it's it's hard, but it is something to look for on those invoices. And then in regards to the four transactions that support invoices, it was credit card statements that just didn't have the attached supporting receipts. Obviously, and Sheri, I believe they have changed the system since moving back to city hall, have a better, making sure those receipts are attached to the statements. So if there's ever any question, the expenses can be justified for what it was for. Moving on to to next one, transfers. So year-end transfers were not made or authorized by the city until after year-end. One transfer was posted to a revenue account, so the transfer account, and then a new internal loan, which is essentially a transfer, was approved by city council, but not made. So kind of what what I tell all my cities with this one is by that last meeting or two in June, you should have a pretty good idea of what's coming in for revenue, what you're gonna be having expenses, so try to make those year-end transfers at that last meeting in the fiscal year so that you're not backdating and approving stuff after fiscal year-end for the end of June. And I believe that's on Lee's plate to do that here this June. And then the internal loan, it had to do with TIF, which we'll we'll touch on in a minute of how confusing TIF is. But I believe the plan is to go forward and and make those corrective loans here in this current fiscal year. All that fair to say, Lee? All right, so those are the internal control comments. The next set of comments are statutory comments that we're supposed to look at that have more to do with Code of Iowa. So the first one has to do with the budget, so this goes back to the budget by function and not by fun. So you amended your budget in June of twenty twenty-one. However, the budgets for the functions of general government and debt service during the year were exceeded. Also, the amount of budget for inner fund transfers were exceeded. And then what we also look at is, were the, was the budget exceeded before the amendment? So it may not have been amended, exceeded in total at the end of the year, but was it exceeded before the amendment? And when we looked at that, it was exceeded for the community and economic development function and the culture and recreation function before the amendment was approved. So this, something to watch going forward. Obviously, in this fiscal year, there was some unforeseen circumstances between Dr. Joe and and whatnot. But just something to watch as a council throughout the year, looking at those budget reports, making sure we're we're staying ahead of the game on that.
It's, Taylor, I just wanted to add, so this is a situation where sometimes the department supervisors, you know, they they, I don't want to say frustrated, but when I'm communicating with them is that we have to, before the expense can be made, we have to adjust the budget, and we have to amend the budget. And so this would be a situation within our audit where it's not that we're telling anyone no, but there is a process that we have to complete before we can expense for the item. So if that makes sense. Thanks, Taylor.
Moving on, questionable disbursements. We didn't notice anything of that, nor did we for travel expense related party or business transactions with the city. The only one was with Cardinal Science and Graphic for for Cara. But since it's less than six thousand dollars, we only have to note it, and you don't have to respond to it, so there's no issue there. Restricted donor activity. This has to do with the Iowa gift law, and we didn't notice any, note anything in the audit about this. However, I I do kind of use this as a reminder each year as employees and council members and people positioned within the city that you can't take anything of value from a potential vendor of three dollars or more. It has to be less than three dollars, which any more than three dollars is basically nothing. So you can't be accept accepting gifts from potential vendors from the city. You can't be going out, having them buy you lunch, gift baskets. That's kind of stuff we're supposed to look at. We didn't note anything of that in the audit. But just a reminder that you wouldn't, you can't be put in a position where a potential vendor could be swaying a decision by by doing things like. So I I do like to add that this came about when school superintendents were getting free trips to Vegas for conferences. So a little bit different situation, but that is what what we look at. Moving on, bond coverage. You guys were good there. Council minutes, so this is threefold here. You went in the closed session on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, but the minutes record did not document the reason for the closed session with documenting the Code of Iowa in chapter twenty-one point five. And then two of the meetings records were not published within fifteen days, as required by the Code of Iowa. And then the summary of receipts is not, was not being published with the minutes. I do believe the summary of receipts has been corrected after year-end, Lee said. And then this closed session and the the publishing of the minutes is very correctable. Anything that there, Lee?
Just, so I was away on vacation, and Sheri had stepped in, and so it's trainable. I mean, it's So it's trainable. I mean, it's just some training on that piece of it. And then again, just making sure that um. We're getting everything over to the index in time to get it posted in time for the fifteen days.
And sometimes with that Code of Iowa, I've I've learned over the years is that. You may have done it. It just maybe didn't necessarily get typed up in the minutes. So I don't know if that was the case here, but uh. Eh, ea- easily corrected going forward. Deposits and investments, you guys are in compliance there. Your revenue bonds and notes, you're in compliance there. Bottom of page fifty seven, comment K, local option, sales tax. So your. Lot what's called the lost ballot. Requires a a third of the local option, sales tax to be for property tax relief. A third for streets, curves, gutters and sewer. And a third for community development uh. Projects. So the first two there are are easily tracked. You make the transfer from loss to general fund for the property tax relief. And then the other third goes with capital projects fund. Of how there gets paid up projects. The issue is with the third one, the community developed projects. That's money is getting transferred in the general fund, but there's no tracking of that to ensure. That when that money gets put in there, it's getting used subsequently for that. That purpose. And and so I believe here in FY twenty two, uh, Lee's gonna start tracking those thing.
That's correct, Taylor.
Moving on to the top of page fifty eight, comment L. Separately maintained accounts. Uh, so there was a separate police savings account. That's on the books for a number of years. Well, it it opened for a number of years, but wasn't on the books. That was the issue. Um, and so it wasn't included in the reports, wasn't getting reconciled uh and whatnot. So. Uh, it needed to be closed and uh. The response at the exit conference was that the savings account has been closed and has been received in the general fund. That that correctly?
Yes, it's been it's been closed and it was receipted into. Um, so it was a police savings account and so it was receipted into the general fund, but it receipted into the police revenue. Sections.
Okay. Moving on to bottom page fifty eight, um, tax increment financing, also known as TIF. I I will say. This is one of the hardest concepts. Uh, I think in governmental accounting, uh, it's it's very ambiguous to me. I feel like I personally didn't learn more about it every year. Um, but what you guys have is a TIF rebate agreement with the developer. For for housing. And as part of that, you're supposed to remit. A portion of the TIF revenues to developer each year um as part of the agreement. However. The developer is basically paid too much as of been through twenty twenty one. Because it's due to six thousand five hundred eighty five dollars and sixty cents. Now, the the good news is is that this revenue uh is starting to it. It takes a long time for the property tax to come on the rolls. But now it's really starting to come on. And so um. If uh I believe this can easily be corrected going forward with. Calculating what the developer is entitled to and then backing out what you've already overpaid. Uh, and I've went went through that with Lee and at the exit conference as well. Uh, and that was the response from you guys is that you're gonna reduce the current year payments to.
Yes, so we're gonna take the current year um. We're gonna back out and then I'll create um a spreadsheet for the developer. So they understand, um, because right now the developer, they believe we're behind in payments. So again. Work through it. We'll create a spreadsheet and then as Taylor's. As I've talked to Taylor, again, a working document going forward. So, you know, we can track. And and those calculations because one calculation calculates different than the second rebate uh as. And I'm learning as well. I again, you even try to reach out to other communities. And their tip works, their their developments are different. Um, it it is a complicated. But we'll get there. We'll get there. Training, training, training.
Moving, moving forward here, top page fifty nine, best service fund balance. So at the end of June of twenty one, you were carrying uh cash balance in the best service fund of nine hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirty one. So in the last year that the state did an audit for you guys for FY nineteen, there was a comment in there that noted. That the city had transferred in TIF money. And they had and you guys had levied for the same thing. So it 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 got doubled up and that's still uh. Still basically sitting in there going forward. So the debt service fund, when you think about it. You're supposed to levy for property taxes each year to pay your general obligation debt. You would receipt those in. And then turn around and pay the obligations each year. So there should be unnecessarily zero, but it should be a relatively low balance. Um, towards the end of the year after all the obligations have been paid. Obviously, having close to a million. Dollars in the fund is not uh. What what I would consider a low balance. So I believe uh Lisa, the plan is to pay down some general obligation debt after talking with your legal counsel. Um, be because you did levy those dollars for general obligation purposes. Uh, paying debt. So I believe the planet and plan is to uh pay down some of those geo obligation.
That's correct. And um, we went through that when we were talking about capital improvement plans. And getting ready to um bond um for more general obligation. And then before we go into the next bond, we're gonna. Have that amount to pay down a general obligation debt. Um, the the situation for existing council members, if you remember, that was in fiscal year. Uh, two thousand and eighteen that it was debt levied and then it was also um TIF levied. And so that's been carrying there since then. And we're just so again, awaiting to pay down a general obligation by working with our financial advisor. Uh, because working with them that they can make sure. Um, for which debt is going to be, you know. Because that's what the debt levy is, is specific to those general obligations. So they can align it correctly.
Uh, moving on to comment O there on same properties. So there's some really old checks on the bank rec. And they're more than two years old. And so when they become more than two years old. The city is required to remit those obligations to the treasurer of the state of Iowa for the Great Iowa Treasure Hunt. And so people can go on and find them and claim them. And so that just needs to be done with some of those old checks on on the bank rec. They're more than two years old.
And we will be processing and getting those corrected as well.
Moving on to comment P, the twenty eight E agreement uh with the rural fire district. So the agreement calls for the city. To remit bills to the district by tenth of the following month. Uh, and then the district's supposed to reimburse. So for the year ending, so from July one of twenty twenty through June thirty of twenty twenty one. The city remitted bills for March of twenty twenty through March of twenty twenty one on April seventh. And April of twenty twenty one bills through June of twenty twenty one bills were remitted on July sixteenth, twenty twenty one. So as a result, only the March twenty twenty one bill was essentially remitted timely um for reimbursement from the districts. But going forward, the city just needs to remit the bills by tenth of each month so that they can timely uh get reimbursed from it.
So just to follow up on that, we do have the process in place and um we have um that being remitted on a timely basis. Um, in March twentieth, the individual who was responsible for putting the billing together had resigned and um. And then we won't talk about all the other things that happened in March twentieth because then the pandemic was on. We hired a a new staff member and there was oversight on again, I'm taking accountability. There was some oversight during the transition. And during the time that we were um. You know, staffing based on the pandemic that that information or those those billings were overlooked. And so since then, um, deputy city clerk uh Hopper has worked very diligently about getting it organized and um. And she works with the rural trustee treasurer and she is emailing those um on a timely basis. And they make sure that they're corresponding. That's what's been reported to me and and I've been a part of seeing her. Her communication. So um. So I'm confident that we're we're headed in the right direction with that as well. I think the bigger part of it is making sure that we put together. Um, a policy uh with the procedure. So in case something would happen with. You know, the employee that's handling that transaction that we have followed through. So it won't, you know, fall through the cracks again. Okay, Taylor, thank you.
All right, moving on to the final comment of your order. Audit report. Again, this has to do with annual urban renewal report, uh, which goes along with TIF. Again, it's very complex. And so there there was some differences in the numbers that were reported on the annual urban renewal report. With what the actual balances were. Uh, I eh I told Lee that. When you get to it next year, we just need to touch base. Make sure these numbers match up with where they need to be. There's different rules for what goes on the annual urban renewal report compared to the annual certification, TIF certification of the county. Uh, it's uh. Very tedious to go through. Um. So going forward, I think we can uh get those numbers squared up with where they need to be uh and move forward.
Can I touch on base with you, Taylor, on that? And and just a mayor and council of. The tricky pieces is that we certify in December for taxes that we haven't received. But the report is based on taxes that we have. And then it also includes any general obligation bonds that we're using TIF dollars for. So again, just some training and um. Working through with Taylor and we'll get it amended and get that back on track to where we need to be with it. So. Okay, Tay.
That's that's everything I have. Again, I I think you guys are. You're trending the right way. All of these things are very fixable. Um, financially, I think you're in a great position moving forward. So uh. Any other questions on on anything that I went over?
Taylor, not so much a question, just a question, I guess, looking at some things I've done in other communities. When you were talking about the uh local option sales tax on page fifty seven. And we were um having difficulties um. Tracking the dispersals for the community development projects. Would it help? And I've done this other committees and you can tell me if I'm way off base, but we. Um, if we were utilizing uh. Local option, sales tax for a project, we created like a. A specific project fund for a project that we were doing in that area. And that way you could track, you know, that you were you were either using local option, sales tax dollars to pay for that project or. Just, you know, from their general tax dollars and 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 we were able to track receipts when that project was done. You know, and it was. Odd it did, you know, it kind of went way off of our book. Would that help in this instance or not?
Yeah, I I you're talking about like a sub fund within the general fund to to track this or whatnot?
It would be like if you. You know, say you had a hundred thousand dollars. I'm I'm changing around number, you know, for the, you know, for that. And 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 add that hundred thousand dollars, you had a project to the library that was gonna take. Fifty thousand, you know, project parks. It was this, you would create a specific line item. In the budget for a project specifically just for the library that would track those expenses utilizing those dollars. Um, we we used to do that in a previous city that I did. It seemed to work fairly well, but. Like I said, I've been out of state for a while and didn't know if that was still something that.
Yeah, I yeah, I I definitely think that would work. And and quite honestly. I have cities that track things similar to this and it's as simple as an Excel spreadsheet just to document. Uh, where they're at. But yeah, what what you said sounds like it would work perfectly too.
We at at that time, we tended to have twelve or fifteen different projects, so we wanted to keep them separate. And we just created a, you know, a line item within our. Budget is is set, you know, as a project fund for that specific purpose. So we were able to track. Every dollar was spent, where it came from. I I I know it's a little extra work and anything Excel spreadsheet would would be a little easier, but. I I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, e- either way would be adequate, just so there's some kind of tracking to. Prove that you're collecting those dollars for that purpose and that's what they're getting used for. Yeah, I think that'd be more than adequate.
That's not what you just said. We did. Is there a deep like books, is that the software that we use or something else?
No, we we use encode and it is a municipality software. Yeah, it's designed.
When you pull it or when you're in a software, does it let you like add those codes to certain funds and then pull?
Well, it. And I I don't I don't think we did, but we would create like through our budget, like. We've got kind of that standard and then know about income is it like getting park and rec, we would create a special project fund and it would have. You know, the numbers would kind of start out and then we'd give it, you know, the last four. We're always.
So we have line item uh detail. And so in, for example, the parking rec. We had a line item for the playground. We had a revenue line. Yeah. But but we're not doing it for like Taylor's thing. So we have it established with the library and we have it established with the park. But we don't have it established when the third goes into general fund. It just goes into the general fund, but there's nothing there saying. Where in the general fund are we are we allocating um? To show that we're utilizing that third as it is on the ballot. Correct, Taylor?
Yeah, yep.
It's the community development piece of it because the ballot states. So, yeah.
The reason I ask is because I used to do it how Dave is talking about um in my old department. Um, because we had even grant funds, you had to be very specific on what's spent and what. And then I transferred to another department and they had a different system where it you could assign and it automatically pulled everything and did everything for you. So.
It does get it's all manual. Yeah, it's it's all manual. Yeah, it's all manual transactions. And that's part of the dual control. We're so if one person's making those journal entries and you have another person that's checking those back. And those are kind of situations where an Excel spreadsheet um to go along with it, it. So you can create it. But again, the downside is you're paying for a software program that you should be able to track it in. But there are a few pieces that with an Excel spreadsheet, it'll allow you to 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 track it better. Um, and then you can go right to your line item. So there's just some things that, you know, we can reach out to encode. Um. Because again, it's a large software program. Um, it's a pretty good sized program even for a city our size. Um, a lot of cities our size, they use a little smaller software program, but because we have um electric. Um, the that's the reason why they're using such a large software program. So there's I'm sure there's options there. It's just again, some more training. And working with encode to establish those. So. If it would automatically do the work for me, then.
I'm always trying to think. No, smarter, not harder, right? Cause I've been there.
Pull every single time, every day. Yeah, yeah.
I again, I think um just to say the biggest thing here is um. The the workload over the, I mean, and and there's no one, you know, we had, we had a pandemic, we've had duration, we've had staffing shortages. So I I. And the state being behind and and, you know, and then. Newly to the position myself and and just um and and the changeover. And so that's behind us and we're gonna go forward and just like Taylor said, we have an opportunity. Um, to take these and and work through them and. And again, we've got questions, we've got resources, we can reach out to Taylor, we can reach out to Lee. I can work, I can reach out to the clerks net, you know, so there's resources there that we can use. Um, but just making the time and having the time to do that. So.
And I think the thing that's important to to note too, because I've been through thirty plus of these audits over my career and there's always comments, you know. there's always comments, you know, there there are always mistakes that are made and it's it's nothing's done intentionally. But that's why you do the audit. Because, you know, by having care or whoever's doing the audit, they find if you made a wrong journal entry, I mean, you easily could fix that. And that's part of this process. So, you know, I don't want people to be, you know, dogging on their shaft that they're not doing the job when they really are. Because it's this is just a fact of why every city audit that I've been through, there there are always issues. And everything that's there is fixable and and we've always fixed it.
We can, I mean, even with our existing council, I mean, again, I mean, a lot of these comments or comments that, just as Taylor said, they rolled over, we know we've we've got to have, now's the time to get them corrected and um and and training, I mean, it's it's just on, we definitely have to have that investment in staff on training and and continued training. Um, and and the purpose of having those policies and procedures in place is because you do you will have turnover and you've got to be prepared for that and you've got to have that succession plan, so.
Definitely.
So I'm I'm confident we're headed in the right direction, so. And Taylor, we have furniture now, so. And next time you tell me, we actually have real stuff, real furniture to set up. Maybe we will be living out of boxes.
There you go.
Well, I'd probably be living out of boxes. I'm a clerk. Do you have any other questions for? And so, Taylor, I do have this on our agenda tonight to to receive um and and file and and the resolution to instruct you to file with the state. And um also approval of your the the billing expenditure. And I know you shared a little bit with um our finance committee. Uh, we had, you had some additional steps that you needed to do uh with this audit. Uh, but again, overall, it's significantly less expensive than what we've even seen from the state in the past few years, so.
Yeah, even with the additional comments that gave over to came through, yeah, yeah.
If you don't have anything else, then if you want to take a break before we get to the Okay, Taylor?
Thanks, guys. We'll see you next year.
Bye, sounds good, thank you.